This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, I don't think it made it to the agenda, but she emailed it. Is it on? She's not late yet. Is that her? Told you she wasn't late yet. As long as we start before it turns to 6:31, we're still on time. Maria, will you start the recording? Good evening. Today is Wednesday, August 14th, 2024, and I would like to call today's city council meeting to order. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mayor Strobin is on a family vacation, trying to get some things done before school gets back into session and the kids got other things to do. So can we have the roll call for tonight?
Councilmember Fox, present. Councilmember Boyle.
Here.
Councilmember Leah.
Here.
Councilmember Servany.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
He's absent.
Mayor Pro Tim Casper.
I am here. I don't know if we started doing it yet or not, but our attorney had recommended that rather than just saying absent excused, is that for council members or is that for the mayor as well? You know?
You can, yeah, you can do it for the mayor as well. I did miss what her recommendation was.
Rather than just stating that absent member is excused.
We say absent excuse. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we ask for a motion and then the council approves the absence.
Yeah, we're going to create some council policies and procedures and we'll make sure to include that in there. Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll excuse him this time then for that. Citizens' public comment. We'll move right into that.
Steve Workman.
Steve Workman, 1220 East Lucas Street. I'm here running the latest, greatest Vineyard Vista. The hearing officer did a good job, but he was very, very concerned about the wastewater runoff. And he said that the city needed to be very aggressive in its review of the proposal. And if the city staff doesn't have real expertise in sewer water runoff, wastewater runoff, maybe they need to hire someone, look at the developer's plan before it's even initiated. Also, I'm worried about the roads. Gather cannot handle tremendous amount of increase in road traffic. It's a real steep road and it's just not meant to handle three times as much traffic as it has in the past. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Neil Johnson.
Neil Johnson, 2142 East Gather. So a lot of this I'm going to talk about today, what I've been tracing before the meeting. So a lot of this is going to be, she probably knows what I'm going to say pretty much, but I'm going to read it anyway. So every winter, our residents battle to limit the property damage caused by heavier than usual precipitation. One likely culprit is storm water.
Turn this light on over here.
And their failure or inability to adequately handle the volume of rain we are experiencing, particularly during abnormal, which nowadays it's more closer to being the new normal, weather events like atmospheric rivers and Arctic storms. State law stipulates that a new development project cannot release more stormwater onto adjacent properties than is currently occurring. The developer for the Vineyard Vista project used a model to account for this. And again, Tracy, I'm just going to read this. And a projection was created. Unfortunately, in the era of climate change, these projections are unlikely to be a reality. We have had several significant weather events over the past few years, and I feel that an actual measurement of the runoff, again, something Tracy was talking about, during one of these major storms is a better indicator of future needs. This can be used as a baseline for the design of the system and that the developer creates. After the system is live, another measurement can be taken during a similar major storm to ensure legal requirements are being met. I do not believe that the municipal code we operate under today related to this issue factor in the change we are seeing in our weather, nor are they, from what I have seen, being updated to account for this in the comprehensive plan. We cannot continue to use outdated models based on historical conditions to predict what capacity these systems need to handle, and our municipal code needs to be updated accordingly. To conclude, we should not keep adding stormwater volume to an existing system that is currently clearly strained under the pressure. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Tylanda.
Craig Tylanda, 1235 East Lucas. I'm here to present a petition with over 300 signatures from residents opposing Vineyard Vista. We, the signers of this petition, oppose this project for the increased stormwater runoff impacting downhill residents, reduced water quality in Breezy Creek and Le Center Bottoms, increased traffic on already overwhelmed roads by additional 800 trips a day that were projected by the study, future tax increases to manage additional development that's going to need to take place, loss of green space and wildlife habitat, and the fact that all the negative impacts, the only recourse of everybody that's going to be impacted by this, we have an opportunity to bring civil suit against the developers. I mean, that, it's just, it's an impractical system that isn't going to benefit the existing citizens of Le Center. With that, you know, walking around the neighborhood, asking my fellow neighbors, you know, do you oppose this project? Are you interested in it? You don't find anybody who's in support. The negatives outweigh any positives. And really, what I'd like to know is, this is the city council. Will each of you take a stand on that? Will you say that you support this project or are you against this project?
We can't comment right now.
Yeah.
Your public comment.
I can take your petition though, and we'll enter it in the minutes.
So ultimately, we're looking for a position from each city council member and the mayor on your position on this project, not just as a representative of the city and the citizenry, but also as a citizen and resident of the city.
What was your name again? Sorry. Craig?
Yeah.
I'll just say, I think that's a reasonable question, but it's not something that we're allowed to do in this particular forum.
Brian Coleman.
Brian Coleman, 2167 East Gather. I'm going to be very brief, to be honest with you. I can see, I'm a short-term resident of the City Hall Center. Been here for a little over two years. I can see the handwriting on the wall. I've seen it happen before in communities that I've lived in. The tax revenue is the big thing. They're going to push this through whether the existing citizens like it or not. One of the things I would ask about is, we recently went through a striping process throughout the city. One of the intersections that's going to be highly affected by this development going in is 18th and Aspen. The crosswalk that goes across the street to a walking path to a new playground facility that's over there that I see young kids on regularly, it'd be a pain for anybody to have any idea why that happened.
No, we'll have Tracy address that in her time.
Ruth Hord Blackwood.
My name is Ruth Hord Blackwood. I live at 1261 East 18th Street. I am on the east side of Gather. I spoke last time in regards to, I've been in my home for 22 years. When I moved in, there was a meadow behind me and we were told there would be no houses built there due to all the multiple springs that are located there that you would see every summer. When the grass would turn brown, you'd see bright green spots. And lo and behold, that wasn't true. So there's multiple homes there. When they went in, my yard flooded and the water came down from the houses there and all their water systems and whatever came under my fence and took out two of my fence boards. And I had Niagara Falls coming through, had to put in another French drain, had to put in another one behind the fence. And then it came down 18th and started taking the dirt out under my driveway. So I had to put money in there. When I opened up my crawl space to go down and have a pest inspection, I had water right up to the bottom of my floor, beautiful clear spring water. And I had to pay again thousands of dollars to get that all directed away from me. So I know, and so do all of the people that live in that area. We are at the bottom of the hill. Water comes downhill and then it stops at the first flat spot, which we all are, on 18th and Heritage, because I'm on that corner. So something is going to happen when they put in a housing development up there. They cut down trees whose roots are holding the ground in. And something major is going to happen because the systems that we have in place cannot accommodate new additional stormwater runoff. And the other issue I have that I spoke about are our roads. My road has never been repaired. My road has never been improved. I improve it. I fill the pothole. I'm on the corner. When they put in Stevens Farms, all the dump trucks, cement trucks, appliance deliveries came up, Heritage and 18th, and then went to Stevens Farms. Our roads aren't made for that. And it's a neighborhood, like I said last time, and we have children playing out there all day long. And Gather is not a flat street. You look like this. Look up Gather. It is not a street that should have 800 cars coming down it. Where they're going to turn to the right or they're going to turn to the left, and it's 18th Street that's going to suffer until they hit Heritage or Aspen. So my concern is, instead of us spending money on improving parks and improving projected consulting fees or whatever for Timmins Landing, maybe we should fix our roads first. And, because I shouldn't have to fill the pothole at the end of my driveway. And, and we shouldn't have to worry that our children can't play. In a neighborhood they're used to playing in. So I would hate to think that a child would lose their life due to all the traffic because we all know children, they don't look. And I'm the person in the neighborhood that says where your helmet? So thank you for this.
Yep, thank you.
Al Filla.
Al Filla, 152 West 15th Street. I'm just glad to see somebody else complaining about all these flatlanders moving into the center. It does my heart good, you know, to see that because we don't need any more people. Haven't needed any more people than 20 years, maybe even longer. But that's not what I want to do, talk about tonight. I know you guys are all going to do your due diligence on this housing development. Been doing fairly good about that. But what I want to talk about tonight is, is Le Center business friendly? You know, I've been asking this question. Well, it's probably, I brought this up probably since, you guys have been on, you know, Liz has heard it before. Is Le Center business friendly? And invariably, I get the answer back, no. I mean, I, some of you see me around. I'm not afraid to talk to people. And I talk to developers, I talk to business people. And bottom line is, they believe Le Center is not business friendly. And that's what's going to get us the money to build these roads. And we're spending thousands of dollars, look, tens of thousands of dollars on consultants, high-priced employees, everything. You know, so we should be able to figure out some way to make Le Center business friendly. Or at least, you know, get them convinced whether we are or not. But, you know, there's developers and whatnot who say, no, we're not. You know, committee system, oh, God, you guys weren't here, Liz was here for the sign. You know, people just don't like it. Well, Melissa, you know. You know, the Center is not business friendly. And if we want to, you know, pay for our roads, well, I know we've got grant writers and we've got people looking for grants and everything else. But, you know, question is, people think, well, gee whiz, I pay my taxes every year. But that doesn't pay for all this fancy stuff, you know, these roads here. You know, God bless, I've lived here all my life. And, you know, we didn't have sidewalks when I grew up here. There were no sidewalks to the school. There were no sidewalks up at, you know, we got white streets and that's due to the card rooms. I was so stubborn about that. I only boycotted them for 30 years. You know, but now I come over to their side. Every Wednesday, you'll see down there eating breakfast. Well, God bless America.
Celeste Monroe.
Celeste Monroe, 2142 East Gather. Storytime again. Last week, I saw a news story about Oregon's 2024 Infrastructure Report Card Score. I'm sure you are familiar with this mechanism to measure the health of our infrastructure assets and that both as a nation and a state, our overall score is an abysmal C minus. As I thought about this in the context of our opposition to Vineyard Vista, I want to emphasize that the bigger issues we have communicated here today are the impact that both rapid growth and climate change are having on the environment and our community's infrastructure assets, particularly roads, stormwater and schools. We are not doing enough to understand the insufficiencies in these fundamental systems and then developing plans to improve them. Lastly, we are concerned about where the funding will come from for these much-needed investments. It's critical for us to acknowledge that climate change is happening more quickly than anyone imagined and its effects are more devastating. Look at what happened in Houston with Hurricane Barrel. I have friends that had to endure indoor temperatures greater than 90 degrees for six days with no power. Then came Hurricane Debbie that moved across the southeast at a much slower rate than normal and dropping significantly more rainfall than forecasted, leading to massive flooding and destruction of property. We don't have to go too far back in our own history to the Arctic Storm we had in January and imagine what it would have been like if it had been accompanied by large-scale power outages. Climate change is the new normal and needs to be a major consideration in our thinking and how we approach our planning. This brings me back to what I see as a lack of focus on infrastructure. Our roads are in poor condition. The rubber sealing of the cracks method is a temporary measure of best. We can't afford to have large construction vehicles destroy our already degrading streets without a plan for how they will be repaired. At a minimum, we need to impose a weight limit on our neighborhood streets. Our stormwater runoff systems are starting to fail in areas and this will likely get worse as we continue to experience changes to our historical weather patterns. We need to update our models and codes accordingly. Lastly, we need to accurately project the impact of rapid growth on our school systems and impose adequate special assessments on new construction to pay for the necessary expansion. I was a senior level strategist for a Fortune 50 company for over 20 years. I don't share this to boast. I'm telling you this to express my conviction based upon significant experience that if something isn't in the plan, it won't get done. The 20-year comprehensive plan represents our chance to make sure that both climate change and infrastructure have a prominent place in our vision for the future and the investments we need to make in our community. If not, then we could end up like that old cliche where doctors stand around congratulating themselves on a successful operation. Too bad the patient died. Thank you.
No more public comments.
Okay. Are there any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello. Kimberly Goheen Elvin, Patriot Life, citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. Living there in Le Center over 30 years where my mother was born. I'd like to educate a few people there about climate change. The climate changes all the time. What's really going on, and people do not know because our media is corrupt. And you can watch this at geoengineeringwatch.org. Geoengineeringwatch.org. Discern for yourself as to what humans are doing to the earth. One of the main reasons why is we are destroying the earth with pollution. Okay, we need to stop that. Couple of other things. Stop the Growth Management Act. People are going to find out that that Growth Management Act is not following the Constitution. And Clark County Council today decided that they will probably have a Growth Management Act public hearing. They're going to talk about it first and then see if the public deserves to hear about it. But I'll tell you this, that Growth Management Act is unconstitutional. I also like to mention that there at Stone Creek, hitting Stone Creek, coming down the hill onto Fourth, we need a three-way light there now. We actually need a light. You cannot get off of Stone Creek when traffic's going east and west there on Fourth Street. We do not want a new downtown. That downtown, that it will be on farmland, it's adjacent to the river. We do not need any tall buildings, five stories or taller. We want out of the GMA and you can pay the cost for that. The people are speaking up right now. And as far as what that man said, he thinks that this is going to carry on, that is, that's not true. What he needs to know is, is we are the boss. We are the government. They are to do what we want. If we do not want growth, they are to stop the Growth Management Act now. As simple as our forefathers warned us to do, when government gets corrupt and becomes dangerous, we are to, quote, abolish them. So stand up, continue to stand up, citizens. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to hear people here. I'd also like to mention that with all this building going on with the Growth Management Act in a recession with inflation, lumber, for God's sake, was expensive four years ago. Think of what it is now. But frankly, they're helping illegal immigrants to have housing. We are paying our hard-earned tax dollars for people that we don't even know and that a lot of them don't like us at all. And in fact, because I've been speaking at the Clark County Council for years now, they will, they have mentioned that I would be a white supremacist because, or a hater because most of the people, in fact, if not all, are coming over illegally and they are of color, more color than I have. Frankly, God traded us all. I am not a racist, black, white, indifferent. It doesn't matter to me that way. But we know that this wicked evil government that we have now has brought up racism, putting salt in a healing wound, and they just are driving it up. You know, they've ruined our children. Our children are in desperate need of being taught. They don't know any of the civics or anything else, for that matter.
We let others go a little bit longer, so. Thank you, Kimberly. All right. Is there anybody else calling in?
Yeah, there's one caller with their hand raised.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm actually the same one that's got their hand raised. Okay, this is Dinah McLean, PO Box 503, Le Center, Washington. I had some public comment on the Vineyard Vista tree retention. For the Vineyard Vista development, several tree removal plans were provided. So I wanted to ensure that the plans to retain the native trees in tracks B and D are upheld and that none of them are removed as per the attached revised tree removal retention plan, which is Exhibit A. And I actually sent an email to the clerk and the planning staff. So you'll be able to see this hopefully later, my exhibits and my documentation. But anyway, so I wanted to make sure that those trees are retained. And then I had questions about the tree protection in Le Center Municipal Code updates. There's Chapter 18.350, Tree Protection, and the purpose of it. Of the chapter is to regulate the removal of trees and prescribe preventative protection measures to avoid damage to trees during the site development in order to preserve the wooded character of the city and to protect trees as a natural resource of the city. That being said, the city has failed to retain over 1,000 older growth trees in the Vineyard Vista plan. Replanting trees cannot begin to replace existing older growth trees. There are many cities that have homes built with older growth tree groupings rather than clear cutting them. And I have another exhibit that shows some photos of that. Older growth trees can add value to the homes developed near them. So we need to improve the Le Center Municipal Code to retain older growth trees and retain the wooded character of the city. So one of my questions in order to do that is how do citizens propose updates to the Center's municipal code? For instance, if they want to propose adopting standards based on such things as the Puget Sound Urban Tree Canopy and Stormwater Management Handbook, the Vancouver's Municipal Code on Tree Vegetation and Soil Conservation, or Mukautio's Grading and Excavation Municipal Code. So hopefully you'll give me, give everybody some insight on that. Additionally, what is the city's process to respond to concerns voiced by the citizens? How do the citizens know that they've been heard and what came of the concerns voiced in public comments? So it'd be great to hear about that. I had a concern about the Homeowners Association establishment. The city failed to ensure that the Southview Heights Phase Eight HOA was established. And this is just below the Vineyard Vista. And there's a five-foot strip abouting East 24th Circle, and I include the property identification number in my letter. But it was never formally granted to the HOA. So should the property now belong to the city or to the people in Southview Heights Phase Eight? Or will it be made a part of the Vineyard Vista HOA? And if so, do the people in Southview Heights Phase Eight have a, say, in its, one-quote, cleanup for the developer? Please make the Vineyard Vista Track B and D along with the five-foot strip and the surrounding older growth trees a green space for the community to enjoy and remove the existing fence that's dilapidated. Please enable people living in Southview Heights Phase Eight to provide input on the plan. And it's also requested that the city put in measures in the municipal code to ensure that proposed HOAs are established for the well-being of the community and to ensure proper maintenance of shared system. And then stormwater concerns. There are several lots in Southview Heights Phase Eight that have private stormwater drainage. And the one along lots 386 to 390 has already failed once. The proposed Vineyard Vista East 24th Stormwater Drainage System runs between lots.
Did you submit these questions in writing?
Yeah, and I'm almost done, actually.
Okay.
Between Forest Seven and Lot. The proposed Vineyard Vista East 24th Stormwater Drainage System runs between lots.
Do you submit these questions in writing?
Yeah, and I'm almost done, actually.
Okay.
Between Forest Seven and lots 408 and 383 on East Height and Circle is the stormwater drainage. It would have potential to flood onto the East Height and Circle if there's too much water overflow, so please review all the stormwater drainage carefully and let me know if you have any questions. And I include a link to the plot map, and also note the references to HOA that should have been established. Climate change is upon us. We should plan our stormwater drainage based on the changing climate, include rain as well as runoff in our calculations. And I included some photos of issues with that. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. We'll have staff review your email. All right, if there's no other public comments from people calling in, are there any public comments to be read?
There is one public comment to be read. So this is regarding Vineyard Vista Development. My name is Alan McLean, and I regret that a minor health issue has kept me from speaking tonight in person. I'm currently the Treasurer of the Vista View Ridge Homeowners Association with 89 homeowners as members. Our HOA has a responsibility of maintaining a common stormwater drain field system located at the north end of eight of the HOA homeowner properties on East 18th Street. This system currently overflows during peak, during peak rain events due to poor design. During the Vineyard Vista Development's Examiner's Office open comment period, the HOA filed a public exhibit with the City of La Center to voice our concerns on the potential increased stormwater runoff from the preliminary planned use of our current system for portions of the Vineyard Vista development. I'm not going to repeat the whole three-page document we submitted along with photos and video, but I do wish to accomplish two things. First, that the city council and mayor be aware of the problem, and if they could please find the time to read Exhibit 26 of the public hearings examiner file case to familiarize themselves with the details. Secondly, that, as required by public hearings examiner, should the Vineyard Vista developers elect to hook into the existing stormwater system at the top of East Gather App as part of their final engineering plans, to remind everyone in the planning department, the city council, and the mayor that Vineyard Vista developers are required to inspect the existing downstream stormwater systems for adequacy. Since our HOA is a vested party in this portion of the project, we request that any such infrastructure inspections include members of the HOA board. You may use myself as a primary contact. My contact details are provided at the top of this public comment. Other board members at the bottom. Respectfully, Alan McLean, Treasurer, Vista View Ridge HOA.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comments to be read?
No other public comments to be read.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any requests for items to be removed? All right. If there are no requests, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Actually, excuse me, Mayor Protem. Could we remove the Special Counsel Services engagement letter and just have a little more clarity on that?
Yes, we can do that. All right, minus the Special Counsel Services letter, can I get a motion to approve the remaining items?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. I don't think we have any, oh, we do have a presentation. We have a new employee that Maria Swinger-Henske is gonna introduce for us.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Protem, and citizens. I'm excited tonight to introduce our newest employee, Hannah Shields, who will serve as our outreach coordinator for the city. So a little about Hannah is she is a lifelong Ridgefield resident, and she is a graduate of Columbia River High School, as well as a recent graduate of WSU Pullman. I was waiting for her go kooks. Okay. She has a degree in Strategic Communications and Public Relations, and she will serve as a few different things for the city. She'll be a liaison to community groups for us. She will help to oversee some city events, including our Christmas festival. You may have most recently seen her at National Night Out. She helped to pull that off for the city. She'll also oversee social media for the city, as well as assisting with communication. And you will get, in a couple of weeks, your September newsletter, so that was one of her very first projects, so she helped to put that together. But we're just looking forward to having her on our team here for the city, and she also looks forward to meeting the citizen. She's already started to make her way around town and meet business owners and things like that, and, but you'll see her out and about at a lot of our events.
All right, very good. Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, next up is the mayor's report. There's nothing written on here, so I guess I get to make up whatever I need to. I will say that I thank you, everybody, for coming in and speaking. Some of the things that you're saying are educational for us, some of the things that you're discussing we aren't aware of. For a lot of us, it's the first time that we've had to deal with one of these situations, so just know that we do appreciate you coming in and talking and sharing your information with us. With that, I think we can move on to the attorney's report. Ms. Parker, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I don't have anything particularly to report, but I can just make a quick comment on the item that was removed from the agenda, just to answer any questions that you would have about that, if you would like.
Yes, please do.
Okay. So the city is, or the, excuse me, the mayor had had some initial discussions with this law firm, Ogden Murphy Wallace, and in particular, the same attorney that had assisted us previously on some tribal issues to work on some projects that the city is continuing to work on with the tribe. And then related to that, we also discussed doing some backup city attorney services if I'm on vacation or unavailable for any particular time. So it's kind of a two-part scope of work, and we drafted it broadly enough that it would be able to accomplish those different things, but it's mostly to work on a few special projects and then some general attorney backup. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions, and I believe I see Heidi on the line who might be able to answer some as well.
Any questions?
Are we ever notified of what these projects are that you're working on, or is that something that's more like classified, and that we find out later?
I don't believe that there's any issues. I think that there's a general wastewater issue, and I can talk and give you more details on the specifics of the project, maybe offline, but I don't think that the projects are secret in any way. There's no pending litigation that I know about that's related to it. It's just helping to negotiate and kinda address, what I understand, being kinda new to La Center has kind of been a longstanding issue with the wastewater line that was put in by the tribe.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next up is council comments. Councilmember Fox.
Hi, good evening. I think my mic's on, it doesn't sound like it is, but Maria told me it is. So I just wanna thank you all again for coming down, and you know, some of you have been here twice now and speaking your truth for, you know, your development and where you're at and concerns you have, and just know that we are definitely listening, and the more you keep coming back and adding to this week after week, it's not just about our ears, it's about the whole city, you know, staff, the engineers, you know, our mayor, of course, and just everybody hearing it, not just us. So just know that we want the best for our current people that live here and the people that will move here, because we are going to grow inevitably, but how can we do that successfully and in smart ways and sustain, you know, without creating bigger problems like you folks are talking about? So, so yes, and please know, like Casey already mentioned, I'm sorry, Councilmember Casper, about that a lot of this we don't know about until, you know, you're kind of coming to, we'll have opportunities where we'll get to meet, and then we will be able to kind of put our heads together and have more of a group conversations at different times, I'm sure, so. Other than that, I just wanna welcome Hannah to the group. That's gonna be great. I think it'll take a lot off Maria's plate, which is great. I just hired somebody similar in my business, and it's already a woo. I know, city is a business, but you, you know, time is money, and you can put your focus on other important things that are, you know, much more needed than that, but also the fun side of being in a city. We still wanna do fun things and connect with our constituents and all of that, so awesome. And I, we haven't had a meeting in a few weeks because of the way the calendar rolls, so I just wanna say thank you to all the volunteers and everybody who put together our days. It was a beautiful celebration. It was my son's birthday. I took him out, took him around. It was a really great time, so just good to see everybody out. So thanks for coming. Keep coming back.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I guess Melissa pretty much nailed it, I guess, you know, with everybody coming out here tonight, speaking their mind, I mean, I know this is an issue that's like not only near and dear to your heart, but it's, I mean, your life investment with your home, it's a big deal. We're definitely listening to you. I do trust our staff that they are putting in their work to, you know, go through everything they can and, you know, we're gonna do the best we can, and that's, I mean, that's all I can say is, it's a tough situation, and I do feel for you guys, and I applaud you for standing up and, you know, bringing it to our attention so that it can be looked into further, but yeah, just try and have faith in us, and we'll all try and work together to, you know, come up with the best solution. Yeah, but other than that, yeah, just thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leia.
I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight, too. That is very important to us, and I wish actually more people would come. I also wanna give a big shout-out for National Night Out, which was last week on Tuesday night, when we had several law enforcement and firefighters, and we had the Lions Club, and it was just a really, really nice event, a lot of fun. Also, I attended the last concert at Sternwiler Park last Saturday night, and they had some really good band, a really good band that played Creed and Clearwater and all those cool songs from the 1980s. It was very fun. And I wanted to make a comment about when we had our voting last week, I was very disappointed to see that 15% of people voted the day before the primary, and the day of, actually, by the end of the day, it did get up to almost 21%. Some people think the primary isn't important, but it is very important, and we had some really, well, every year you have important races. I don't wanna make one year better than the other one or more important, but maybe everybody in this room voted. If you did, I applaud you, but please encourage anyone that you know to please vote in the primary and the general. The general will be coming up in November, so it's very, very important. I do wanna say, this is kind of a plug for Battleground, the stop sign that the young lady ran that T-boned me, they put a flashing red light on it now so that that might help that not happening to somebody else. So I appreciated them, I guess my, there's been some fatalities there, but my accident was the last one, where I kinda pushed them over the edge, let's get a flashing light on there. So I'm very happy about that. So I'm sure that our city, if that came up, would try to do that, too. So thank you again for coming out, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Serpenee.
Thank you, Mayor. It may seem redundant that each of us thank you for coming, but it means a lot. There have been meetings where we didn't have anybody in the audience, and that, that's very difficult. So having people from the community that we all live in and love come and express themselves is so very, very meaningful and helps us, as everyone has already said, understand what each area's issues are, and we've all experienced growth in our neighborhoods, and, you know, sure, we would love to throw across the bridge and say, no more growth, but that's not in our control. And so what your comments do are very important in terms of guiding us and guiding the Planning Commission in reevaluating as we grow as a community, what needs to be changed, what needs to be expanded to really address the issues that we face, 'cause realistically, all of our properties go downhill. All of the properties run right into the river. So as you've already mentioned, we have to become more critical about how it impacts the Lewis River, how it impacts our creeks, and the aspect of climate change, and, you know, we represent ourselves as being a wetland area for people to come and walk the trails and see the wildlife, and every time a new development comes in, that impacts the wildlife, whether we wanna admit it or not, it does. So I thank you. I don't wanna get up here on a soapbox, but it really does touch us and mean a lot. We may not be able to respond directly to you for, you know, legal reasonings if the case comes back before us, but we do listen, and we do try to make sound decisions based within the existing laws and ordinances that are given. So thank you very, very much. And Skip, it's great to have you back. You take care of yourself and get well.
Seconded.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Liz. You bring up a couple of really good points that was asked about a couple of times, or mentioned a couple of times in public comment today, and that is the fact that our ordinances need to be updated. We're well aware of that. Our staff is well aware of that. You know, it's, it's, you usually don't know that one needs to be updated until it's time to use that ordinance, and then that, at that point in time, it's too late, so you try and get it fixed for the next one. I know in the past, it's been council members that have made a suggestion in a meeting. Janine, if you're still on, is, what is the process for getting a ordinance under review?
So, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
Oh, okay. A little bit of a delay. So for ordinances, I think mostly what we're talking here are development-related ordinances, and generally, those have a process that goes to the Planning Commission. And so maybe Tracy can also chime in here as she, as I'm speaking, in case she knows more information about the process than I am. But usually, the staff will undertake to do a review and identify what issues we can identify and undertake to do some drafts, perhaps have attorney review, have consultant review on what that should be, and then that goes to the Planning Commission, and they review it, discuss it, talk about how it works in the community. They have public hearings where they, and stakeholder meetings and all kinds of public process to kind of get that draft proposal into a final form, and then that comes to council for adoption. Some other, for example, not all cities' building codes go through the Planning Commission, so different ordinances that regulate different things might have a different process, but that is generally the process for a development regulation-type code.
Okay, thank you. And I believe in the past, we've had, if you send an email in to city staff, include council members on it, then it gets to the top of the list, and then we can start the process as a city. So just, if there is something that you have concerns about, send it to Maria and Tracy and a council member or the mayor, and that way they can get that process started. So we know that they need to be worked on, so that can help us. So that can help us kind of prioritize which ones we try to tackle first. So. All right. Next up is the Public Works Staff Report. Ms. Tracy Coleman has the floor.
I've got nothing. Just kidding. Okay, so first and foremost, thank you very much. And I want to let you know that on the back table there, well, actually it's not on the back table, it's for checkout. This is from Clark County. This is a comprehensive solid waste manual. And this is up for review right now. This is your garbage recycle service. And so it's up for review and they're asking for any public comment to be submitted by the end of August, which is the end of this month. I know some people don't have internet access. They do require the comments to be submitted via the internet. But what I'd like to say is that I had to bring a copy of this. And if you'd like to check this out, I'm allowing people to check it out for three days at a time. It's bazillion pages and then some. But I will tell you, I have certain chapters in here that I can share with you. So if you want to look at that, there's 526 pages. It's good bathroom reading, if you'd like, Skip. We can hand it to you and use it if you'd like. It's good paper. So anyway, there you go. There you go. So, but what I'm just saying is we have this at the front desk. If anybody would like to check it out, go ahead and check it out. We ask you just check it out three days at a time because we have a short timeframe where it has to be back. If you have any comments, there is a barcode and they have these handouts. I have them on the back table there. You can scan it and you can go right into there and you can put your comments in there. Or if you want to give me the comments in an email, I can go ahead and put them in there for you. But just want to let you know that's back there and it's for review. In addition to that, I talked to Clark County Comprehensive Solid Waste and they're, they have a compost community hub. So if you have composts that you want to start using, there is a barcode on here. You can find out where it's at. You can go on the website. There's some of these back there at the table as well. But I'm looking at starting this here in La Center and looking for a place to put the comp, compost bin. So if you want to, most of the time it happens at a church. So if you want to come drop off your food products, eggshells, whatever you have, you can drop it off there. So I'm going to start working on this. I got a gal at the Comprehensive Solid Waste Management at Clark County that's going to come here. I've asked her to come and talk to us. So I'm hoping she'll come to us next month before we get that going. If you guys have some good ideas for that. But I just want to give you guys the heads up on that, that that's available and, and for you to give comment on. Also, let's see, what else is it going to say? I asked them also to attend a council meeting in January to give us an update for our community of what they have going on. So they'll be here in January for a, an update for us. And then in regards to kind of what's going on in Public Works, I was very pleased to hear everybody's concern on roads because that's my cup of tea. I love doing road work. So any money you want to give me for roads, council members, and take it from something else, I'll be more than happy to use that within the city. Just, just saying for a friend. But we'll just start going down the list here. So in regards to our streets, we have flagpoles on a roundabout when you're coming into town. We are going to have some flagpoles that are going in there. They'll be in before the next council meeting. And we'll be displaying the US flag and the state flag there. Then also on Aspen and 10th Avenue, I applied for a TIB grant for the overlay project because as you know, there's, so I'm going to back up just a little bit. The, the whole entire road system within La Center has been surveyed. It also has been evaluated as far as the road, what the status of the road is. And I'm working on a process to figure out what do we do first? So obviously, as you know, main thoroughfares are the one you're going to look at first, right? We're not going to look at the, the dead end road with the roundabout on it. We're going to look at, not a roundabout with a cul-de-sac. We're going to look at a main thoroughfare that we're going to work on first. Heavy traffic, heavy truck traffic because of the fact that those get torn up the first. So with that being said, the first road that I looked at was Aspen and 10th Avenue because that's where all the truck traffic goes through. So I applied for a grant there. It's over a million dollar grant to fix that road, just so you know. So the estimate for that. So if you just think about one road here in La Center, we're talking over a million dollars, the match on that is $100,000. Your entire street fund was $150,000. So I'm going to tell you, I've already spent $150,000 this year. And so this is for next year. So I'm just giving you a heads up that there isn't a lot of funds in the street fund and, and that's something we can work on. I'm going to educate the council from what I've seen and I'm going to educate the community. And you guys can decide what you want to do. If you want to spend money on roads, you spend money on roads. If you don't, you don't. It's going to be your call. But I'll give you the information so you can decide how you want your money to be spent and where you want it spent. So anyway, that, that has been submitted and I'm hoping to hear back by November if we get that grant for next year. Also, I'm working with C-Trans on a park and ride and the park and ride is going to be at that vacant parking lot, which is across from the street, across the street from the church at Sixth and Burt. So if you've noticed, we've started to clean up that parking lot right now. And so we'll get some paving in there. So we'd have some ADA accessibility in there. It'll create a more of a community access. I know they're going to have, C-Trans is going to have a bus that goes to the general grocery store at, in Ridgefield. And as you know, there's going to be a Costco in there as well. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to put online, I hope to have it online by next week, that we want your feedback for the park and ride as where you want the bus to go. So I'll put some questions online. You give me the feedback. I feed that back to C-Trans and then they'll determine where that bus route is going to go and what times you'd like to see the bus route here in town. So make sure you go online onto our city website. I'll have that in there, like I said, probably by the end of next week and you can just answer the questions and then I'll get that back to C-Trans. Also, the contractor came back, the bids came back for the Stone Creek Betonite Dam replacement. If you drive down Stone Creek, you see the big, they look like pimples on the road. But anyway, you see those big bumps in the road and that's the Betonite Clay Dams. And so we're going to be taking those out, removing them and replacing them. That work will start this month and it'll go, they have until September 30th to complete it. We have told the contractor that they absolutely have to work around the school pickup, school bus pickup and drop off. So they won't have the road closed during that time. But the road may be closed for certain periods of time or parts of the road outside of the school bus pickup and drop off. The setup and takedown for our days went very well. I was impressed with the Public Works as this is the first year I worked with them for the our days celebration. And we actually received a wonderful thank you letter from our Clark County Sheriff's Office in the work that we had done for our days. And also for the National Night Out. They did a great job there, too. So we received some good communication from the Sheriff's Office and from the staff here at City Hall. BMX track at Holly Park, you know, we took that out. We will be rebuilding that track before October, end of October, before we get the bad, bad weather in here. So just so you know, if you have kids that use BMX tracks that, or grandkids, that we'll be putting that BMX track back in there. Holly Park Playground Equipment, I applied for a grant there. Our, our playground equipment, most of it that I've seen and we've evaluated is from 1995. And parts are becoming obsolete and hard to get repaired. So sometimes, you know, you have to take maybe a slide out because you can't get a part for that slide. So there's also new requirements due to head entrapments, so on and so forth for playground equipment. So I applied for a grant for $150,000 and that's just for the equipment itself. That doesn't include the installation of it. And so the funding match is $75,000. So we'll see if we're able to get that grant to be able to update some of that playground equipment there. Stormwater. So we've had stormwater requests throughout town and we've actually started a program now and we're tracking all of our stormwater here in town where we're using a jetter to clean out our stormwater pipes. And so we're tracking those and we're tracking the frequency and the repairs that we're doing throughout the town. In regards to wastewater, so just, just a clarification, wastewater is not stormwater because I've heard some different comments here from some citizens. So wastewater is when you flush your toilet. Stormwater is stuff that's on the road that runs off. So we want to make sure that we get that clear. So on our wastewater, we've, we replaced our air compressor at the rotary screen press down at our wastewater plant. And we submitted both our monthly discharge for monitoring report and our infiltration system for the Department of Ecology. Both of those have been submitted. Those are always available online. If you're interested in reading about that, they're available online at the Department of Ecology. In regards to, we talked about, somebody made a comment that we need a signal at Fourth Street and we are actually putting a signal in a Fourth Street. And so just to give you guys a heads up, we have two grants, the Fourth Street Signal, which is across from the church, not the church, the school, sorry about that. And then we have the Breeze Creek Culvert Project. You guys are all aware of that. Brian's been involved in that for the past year and Tony. And so we split these up now. They're two separate projects. We have the Fourth Street Signal Project and these are grant funded. This project has gone out to bid. The request for bid is due back on September 4th. With that being said, we have an anticipated start date. You'll start to see some construction going on beginning November. So just be prepared for that when you start to see some activity going out there on that road. And then the widening of the Culvert Project, that also is 100% grant funded. We are right now working on obtaining right away from some landowners in that area. Once that's obtained, then we'll need to get environmental approval from WashDOT and then we'll get those funds allocated so we can start on that shared use path as well. So we had the, the tribal funded our engineering for the roundabout up where the intersection is, where the Shell Gas Station is, right up there. And so we actually selected HHPR as our engineering firm and we are working on the contract with them so we can start doing the engineering for that roundabout up there at that intersection. And then the police building fencing is going to be completed by next week. It was supposed to be completed last week, but the parts were delayed. So it'll be completed by next week. So they're out there. If you saw them out there, drove by there, you see they're working on the, the gate mechanisms right now. Reminder that there's five parking lots. Our city parking lots are going to be closed starting on September 13th. It's a Friday night. So on Friday night, they'll be closed all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and then we'll open them back up on Sep, the morning of the 14th, 16th, when the guys come in because we're doing slurry seal and painting and striping of all of our city parking lots. So those will be back opened up. So we can't have anybody driving on in the interim, uh, building department. So at Highland Terrace, we have on phase one and two, we have 17 homes that are currently under construction. And Case Place has eight homes under construction. Stevens Hillside has nine homes. Lockwood Meadows has eight. And kind of some good news, I know everybody's waiting and anticipating this, but the mini mart is in the process of getting final signatures from Calitz County and Rescue of the Health Department and hope to receive occupancy soon. So that's up there at the junction. So that's kind of neat. In regards to positions that we have open, so we have a wastewater treatment plant operator three or four that is online right now. If you know anybody who has wastewater certification, I encourage them to imply, apply, not imply. That would be implode, but yeah, apply. And then also we have street maintenance workers, one or two. So if you have anybody who's out there that's looking to get their foot in the door with the city to do street maintenance, we encourage them to imply as well. And when they apply, they, there's either level one or two if they have previous maintenance experience and that would be a level two. If not, it's a level one. And then we also have our code enforcement officer position that's still advertised. And I would really like to see somebody apply for that one. So I don't have to do that anymore, but it's just a dream. All right. And then other than that, that's all I have. I will share that the community development activity chart that I submitted is absolutely wrong. It's a fiasco and so it is whacked out. So please don't look at that. I need to update it. I actually put the numbers in and clicked on it and it didn't work. And so I was looking at it today and thought, yeah, that's not right. So I, I apologize for that. I'll have a corrected chart when I come back at the next, the next council meeting when I present. But know that, that all the comments in regards to the development, I will say that there's always options in life and the options in life are, you know, people can pony their money up together. They can buy things to preserve land. And I know that is probably not realistic for the land that's above your development. But what I will tell you is that I will look at everything that is under the municipal code. I will look at everything that is through the storm drains as far as what the rules and regulations are. And I will make sure that we review, review the plan sets with a fine tooth comb. And I also shared with some of the residents that I'm looking at a process of actually measuring the flow of the storm right now to see where, where it's at so that what the development does happen, if it does move forward, what's, what's, what's that flow going to be in the future? So if somebody says, oh, you know, it's flowing so many gallons per minute and then all of a sudden they're saying it's flowing three times as fast, I'll be able to measure it and say, well, it's not, or it is. So we can look at that. And then what do we do if it is? So just know that it's, we're listening to you, but we also have to follow what our municipal code says. If we are in the Growth Management Act, people have a right to develop their property, just like you have a right to sell your property in development into a duplex. You know, so everybody has a right to develop their property. It's just making sure that when they develop it, that they follow the rules and regulations to make sure it doesn't affect others. So we'll do our best when we're reviewing these plan sets if they do decide to move forward. And, and I just wanted to assure you of that. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Tracy.
All right. So back to items removed from the consent agenda. I, I think Ms. Parker did a good job of explaining what that contract was, was for. And if you remember with our previous city attorney, we also had a substitute attorney, Sean McPherson, that would come in and, and be here for us when, when he was unavailable. So that's part of this contract as well. And I do know that, that the mayor was real impressed with this particular attorney when it came to dealing with the contract negotiations with the tribe. And having that expertise available to us for any future dealings with the tribe, I think is, is, is good, too. So is there any more discussion about the attorney contract?
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. Motion passes. We approved the contract for, for the attorney. Do we have any unfinished business to discuss? Any new business, new business to discuss? All right. One last thing I do want to say is, and, and I said this before at a meeting, but again, it's good to see this many people coming in and listening to what's going on in the city and learning with us. But once this situation has, has passed, whatever it ends up looking like, I challenge you guys to keep coming in. Like I said earlier, the, the issues with the ordinance, the staff needs to know what, what those are. The council needs to know what, what those are. So please come back, keep coming in, keep bringing things to our attention so that we can deal with that kind of stuff. So thank you. With that, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This meeting is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.